And colleagues, if you have entered the council chambers, don't forget to press your roll call button. We do have 11, so we would need two more of our colleagues to make quorum this afternoon. So colleagues, I think we're going to go forth with our recognition this afternoon. So if I can be joined by Chair Eugenia Charles Newton up to the presenters' table. And we want to recognize and express our appreciation to one of our own, Mr. Brian Parrish. So if you could come down to the floor and down to the presenters' table, please join myself and Chair Eugenia Charles Newton. Thank you, colleagues. Chair Eugenia Charles Newton. Thank you, colleagues. Since we are waiting for quorum this afternoon, we wanted to welcome Mr. Parrish back to our council chambers. As many of you are aware, we do have Mr. Parrish who will be leaving as within Navajo Nation Gaming Enterprise. So we wanted to express our appreciation, you know, we wish you good well wishes and thank you for all that you have done for the nation and also for our people here and just being able to work closely with us in the council. But at this time allow to give some time over to Chair Eugenia Charles Newton, who you work closely with, as her being the chair of the gaming subcommittee.
Thank you, Speaker, and thank you, colleagues. As many of you know, Brian has been the CEO for gaming. He worked for the Navajo Nation for nine and a half years and he'll be leaving us this year to focus on his family, which we all say family first here at council, and to also focus on his health and to focus on, you know, just moving on to a new chapter. We know that during the time, the nine and a half years that Mr. Parrish was here, he did take on a huge endeavor which was trying to assist with gaming. As we know, you know, gaming is one of our enterprises and we do appreciate the work that he has done and the years that he has served our Navajo people. So at this time, colleagues, both Speaker and I wanted to recognize Mr. Parrish for the hard work that he has given to the Navajo people and to the Navajo Nation. So at this time, if you can all join us in giving Mr. Parrish a round of applause for his nine and a half years working for the Navajo people. And Mr. Parrish, Speaker's office actually prepared a nice gift for you that we would like to gift you at this time. Again, we appreciate the nine and a half years that you've worked with our people, worked for our people and with gaming here on the nation. Speaker?
Again, thank you, Mr. Parrish, and we wish you well. We just pray for your continued success wherever you may go and just praying for you and your family and your well-being as well. And just want to say thank you. We wanted to express this appreciation within the council chambers this afternoon. So colleagues, if you do want to come and join us and shake Mr. Parrish's hand, and we'll have Chair being able to have the honor to help review. Thank you, colleagues. We do have 13 members that pressed the roll call button to be here to conduct our special council session. Today is August 25th and we will begin, since we do have 13 here enrolled, call that does constitute a quorum. And she, we will call the meeting to order at 1:29 PM. If there are any volunteers from our colleagues, if you want to wish to provide invocation this afternoon.
Oh, delightful to do the invocation this morning, Madam Speaker. I don't know.
Recognizing guests and visiting officials to the Navajo Nation. Colleagues, are there any recognitions or any guests or visiting officials? Second call. Third call, going down the line to our agenda. Review and adopt the agenda. To read the proposed, our special session agenda into the record.
Good afternoon, delegates, presenters, and participating audience. This is the proposed agenda of the 25th Navajo Nation Council. This is a special session held today, Friday, August 25th, 2023, 1 o'clock PM, Navajo Nation Council Chambers in Winter Rock, Arizona, Navajo Nation. Presiding Honorable Crystal Lynn Curly, Speaker, 25th Navajo Nation Council. One, call meeting to order, roll call, invocation. Two, recognize guests and visiting officials. Three, review and adopt the agenda. Four, oh, business, there is none. Five, new business. A, legislation 0207-23. This is sponsored by Honorable Shandine Parrish. Six, close of session announcements and adjournment. Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Ms. Cook. Colleagues, do we have a motion on the floor? Motion by Shandine Parrish. Second by Honorable Eugenia Charles Newton. Colleagues, do we have any questions or comments on our agenda? We have Honorable Tolth.
Madam Speaker, thank you. Do, kon beeshwas, anitlani. At this time, I'd like to make amendment to this agenda. I believe the documentations at the Office of Legislative Service, I just signed the document in regards to emergency legislation request for three million dollars for Hundred and Ten Chapter. This is pertaining to the executive order that was issued by the President, Edie Tati Sonson. I don't have the tracking number, but the stash have it at the Office of Legislative Service, Edie. I don't have that document, I just signed it, so Edie, keshabit osa. Madam Speaker.
Yahay, Honorable Tolth. We're going, just talking with our Office of Legislative Services, that legislation that you are referring to is still underneath review, is not ready to be added onto the agenda as of right now. So the timeframe may be within a couple of hours, Jana, shichay.
Of course, I, the sheba, I'll, I'll keep checking. Thank you.
Colleagues, as a reminder, we do have fourteen of our colleagues here today, so any additions to the agenda, some of our legislations do require two-thirds vote. So as of right now, we do have fourteen, and two-thirds vote is sixteen colleagues. So we don't have enough, if you're going to add, just as a reminder, colleagues, for any two-third legislations that you would be willing to add. Want to go down the line to Vice Chair Johnson?
Thank you, Speaker Curly, and good afternoon to my honorable colleagues of the Twenty-Fifth Navajo Nation Council. I'd like to add a couple legislations to the agenda. Zero Two Zero One Dash Two Three and Zero One Nine Six Dash Two Three.
Thank you, Honorable Johnson, for your request of to motioning to amendment number one, adding Legislation Zero Two Zero One Dash Two Three and Zero One Nine Six Dash Two Three to new business. I'm going to have Ms. Cook read the titles into the record before we entertain a second.
Legislation Zero Two Zero One Dash Two Three, inaction relating to the N'ap'ik'iyatik Committee and Navajo Nation Council, amending C A P dash zero eight dash two three, the Navajo Nation Fiscal Recovery Fund Delegate Region Project Plan for Honorable Casey Allen Johnson's Delegate Region. Chapters include Cameron, Coal Mine Canyon, Bird Springs, Loop, Talani Lake, to include additional projects for this delegate region. This legislation requires a two-thirds vote. This legislation has been read into the record by electronic voice recording per Navajo Nation Council Rules of Order Number Nine. The sponsor of this legislation is Honorable Casey Allen Johnson. Legislation Zero One Nine Six Dash Two Three, inaction relating to the N'ap'ik'iyatik Committees and the Navajo Nation Council, amending Council Resolutions C J Y dash four one dash two one and C J N dash two nine dash two two, delegating the N'ap'ik'iyatik Committee as the final approval authority for delegate region project plans funded through the Navajo Nation's Fiscal Recovery Funds. The sponsor of this legislation is Honorable Danny Simpson, co-sponsors Honorable Casey Allen Johnson. Navajo Nation Council is final authority. This legislation requires a two-thirds vote. This legislation has been read into the record by electronic voice recording per Navajo Nation Council Standing Rules, Rules of Order. Madam Speaker.
I thank you, Ms. Cook, for reading legislation, two of those legislations, Zero Two Zero One Dash Two Three, Zero One Nine Six Dash Two Three. Colleagues, just a reminder, Vice Chair Johnson, that two of these legislation will require a two-thirds vote, and we currently have fifteen council delegates here within the chambers. So another recommendation is, once we do reach that sixteen, you can always entertain a suspension of floor rules to add those legislations. Just for clarification, I guess, once we do adopt our agenda, the only thing that will be added on are emergency legislations, colleagues. Point of order, Chair Eugenia Charles Newton.
Thank you, Speaker. This might actually be a point of privilege, actually. So if the two-thirds is required, that sixteen votes, which doesn't include you, so technically we would need seventeen in the chambers. Legislation Zero Two Zero Seven Dash Two Three does require a two-thirds vote, Speaker. So it doesn't look like we have enough at this time to even entertain what we have on the agenda. So how do you, how are we going to proceed with, we can add on the legislations, but without the two-thirds vote, then what would happen? Thank you, Speaker. That's...
I thank you, Chair Eugenia Charles Newton, for raising that point of privilege, colleagues. So just for clarification, Legislation Zero Two Zero One Dash Two Three is a two-thirds vote legislation, and then Legislation Zero One Nine Six Dash Two Three is also a two-third legislation. I'm going to return the floor over to Ms. Barbaroff to give us that guidance on, on if it does, what will happen if this does get on the agenda with that two-thirds vote legislations. And also a reminder, the audit that is being sponsored by Honorable Parish is a two-thirds vote as well. Oh, that was a typo. It's a majority vote. Legislation Zero Two Oh Seven Dash Two Three is a majority vote, so we got that clarification from staff that it was a typo. Chair Eugenia Charles Newton, does that address your question?
Yes, it does, Speaker. So technically, we would only have Legislation Zero Two Zero Seven Dash Two Three on the agenda. Okay. Thank you.
Since we did have a current motion here on the floor, just with that explanation, Vice Chair Johnson, I don't know if you want to keep holding your motion, or I'll leave that decision up to you. Vice Chair Johnson? Question of privilege raised by Honorable Daniels.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, yahay, kodo. I have a question, kodo, dam, how many of the delegates are excused today? Ado na na, kodo, na gay, dam, arobiga, dandash, lhihiwati, ibna, dashna, di, llanza, na, dahi, khati, so, irima, wanay, dahl, kidal, lhihi. Thank you.
Gosh, she, yash, Honorable Daniels, kwaegi, na, tin, lhihi, we do have, for the record, this is twenty-four hours, more than forty-eight hours notice, forty-eight hours that our colleagues did request for, to be excused. I know there was initially a request, petition for nine A M., but these same delegates did also request during that time to also be excused. So we do have excused Honorable Simpson and Honorable Dr. Andy Nez and Honorable Shauna Anne Tla, who are excused, who are traveling to New Orleans for the U S N S Navy Navajo Ship christening event. And then we also had Honorable Nez, who did request to be excused during N'ap'ik'iyatik Committee yesterday. And then we also had an email from Honorable Vice Chair Yasi to be excused, prior, I believe, on Monday or Tuesday, she did request to be excused. There is one, two, three, four, five excused today. Honorable Vice Chair Johnson?
I'm going to go ahead and cross my fingers, and hopefully two more show up.
Thank you, Vice Chair Johnson. He's going to keep with his motion to add on those two legislations, colleagues. Is there a second? Second by Honorable Karodi. Okay, we are on amendment number one, colleagues. It is on the board, is adding legislation, two legislations. Colleagues, are there any questions on amendment number one? We have Honorable So.
Thank you very much. All right. All righty then, I think we have enough now. What I'm getting, what I'm going to indicate is that, no, forget it, we're back on main motion. Thank you. Wave my time.
Thank you, Honorable So, for amendment number one. Honorable Karodi.
Oh, yahay, thank you. Shiveja, I'd like to ask the motioning party to make a modification, so Delegate Stephen Arviso's Regional Projects, Legislation Zero One Five Nine Dash Twenty One. In addition, myself, Delegate Karodi's Regional Projects, Zero One Nine Nine Dash Two Three, I do have an amendment, and it's ready. And Legislation Zero Zero Five Three Dash Twenty Three, these are the victim rights. If, I just need confirmation with Legislative Council, if this could be done at a special council, or does it have to be at a regular council session? Anybody else has regional plans? Tolth, you want your regional plan? No? And then Delegate Daniel's Regional Plan? Two Zero Five? Uh, thank you. If I'm in order, and I will reserve my time.
Thank you, Honorable Karodi. There is a request to... There is a request to the motioning party to add on Legislation Zero One Five Nine Dash Two Three, Zero One Nine Nine Dash Two Three, Zero Zero Five Three Dash Two Three, and Zero Two Zero Five Dash Two Three. In regards to the questions, if, if this, one of the legislations has to be at special or regular session, Honorable colleague, Ms. Barbaroff advised that it can be done at special session. Staff, could you help us read those titles into the record? And I will turn the floor over to Vice Chair Johnson.
Legislation Zero One Five Nine Dash Two Three, inaction relating to the N'ap'ik'iyatik Committee and Navajo Nation Council, amending C M Y Dash Three Nine Dash Two Three and C A P Dash Eleven Dash Two Three, the Navajo Nation Fiscal Recovery Fund Delegate Region Project Plan for Honorable Stephen R. Arviso's Delegate Region. Chapters include Church Rock, Ayumbato, Mariano Lake, Pinedale, Smith Lake, Tharu, to include additional projects for this delegate region. This legislation requires a two-thirds vote. Navajo Nation Council is the final, is the last standing committee to go through, and this moves forward to O P V P for approval. The sponsor of this legislation is Honorable Stephen R. Arviso. This legislation has been read into the record by electronic voice recording per Navajo Nation Council Rules of Order Number Nine. Legislation Zero One Nine Nine Dash Two Three, inaction relating to the N'ap'ik'iyatik Committee and Navajo Nation Council, amending C J Y Dash Five Seven Dash Two Three and C D Dash Six Seven Dash Two Two, the Navajo Nation Fiscal Recovery Fund Delegate Region Project Plan for Honorable Amber Canaz Bakrati's Delegate Region. Chapters include Cove, Totalina, Two Gray Hills, Red Valley, Tuhotro, Sheep Springs, Sanasti, B'Clavato, G'dai, Toko, to include additional projects for this delegate region. This legislation requires a two-thirds vote and moves forward to Office of the President and Vice President for approval. This legislation is sponsored by Honorable Amber Canaz Bakrati. Legislation Zero Zero Five Three Dash Two Three, inaction relating to Law and Order and N'ap'ik'iyatik Committees and the Navajo Nation Council, enacting the Navajo Nation Victims Rights Act of two thousand and twenty-three, amending Title Seventeen of the Navajo Nation Code. This legislation is sponsored by Honorable Amber Canaz Bakrati. This is, this legislation is co-sponsored by Honorable Seth Damon and Honorable Shandine Parish. This legislation, final authority rests with Navajo Nation Council, and this legislation has been read into the record by electronic voice recording per Navajo Nation Council Rules of Order Number Nine. Legislation Zero Two Zero Five Dash Two Three, inaction relating to the N'ap'ik'iyatik Committee and Navajo Nation Council, approving C J Y Dash Five One Dash Two Three and C A P Dash Two One Dash Two Three, the Navajo Nation Fiscal Recovery Fund Delegate Region Project Plan for Honorable Herman M. Daniels Delegate Region. Chapters include Tepakin, Navajo Mountain, Shanto, Ol'Jato, to include additional projects for this delegate region. This legislation requires a two-thirds vote and moves forward to O P V P for their final, for the final approval. The sponsor of this legislation is Honorable Herman M. Daniels Junior, co-sponsors Honorable Crystal Lynn Curly. This legislation has been read into the record by electronic voice recording per Navajo Nation Council Rules of Order Number Nine. Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Ms. Cook, for reading those titles into the record. Vice Chair Johnson, there is that request for modification. Vice Chair Johnson concurs and accepts. And we had a second by Honorable Karodi, concurs. Thank you, colleagues. We do have amendment number one here on the board. Are there any other questions? Second call. Third call, going for a vote for amendment number one to our agenda. Two minutes on the board. We do, excuse me, before we go into a vote, we do have a reserved time. Honorable Karati, four minutes and one second.
Oh, yeah, Shadiza, I'll wave my time, thank you.
Honorable Karati waves her time. And there are no other reserved times, colleagues. We're going to the board for two minutes on amendment number one. We have one minute on the board, colleagues. Honorable Toll. Vice Chair Simonsen, Chair Jesus. Colleagues, we do have the full vote here within the council. We have a vote of 16 in favor, zero opposed, with Speaker not voting on amendment number one. Colleagues, we are back on the main motion to adopt our agenda. We do have a motion and a second. Are there any other amendments? Deletions, additions? Vice Chair Johnson, you did not reserve your time back when it was on the main motion on the agenda. So colleagues, make sure to reserve your time. Colleagues, any questions, comments? Honorable Daniels?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Add to the agenda. Let me see here, which of these legislations can be added to consent agenda? F, all the F R F? Reserve time.
Reserve time of 4:42. Let me get that listing for you with staff, hold on. I thank you, Honorable Daniels. There will just only be two that are without amendments that can be added on to consent agenda, that is Legislation 0201-23, 0205-23. And for 0199-23 and 0159-23, there are requests for amendments. So two, two legislations. Honorable Daniels?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. So with that, I'll go ahead and make that motion for consent agenda. Reserve time.
Reserve time of 4:40. And we do have a second by Honorable Damon. Colleagues, are there any objections to the consent agenda motion? Second call. Third call, going to the board for amendment number two to our agenda. Honorable Karati? Colleagues, we do have the full vote here on the floor. We have 16 in favor, zero opposed, with Speaker not voting. So that is for amendment number two. Colleagues, we are back on the main motion of our agenda. Are there any additions or deletions? Second call. Third call, going for a vote on our main agenda, main motion. We'll do a second reading and we will open up the board for two minutes.
Amendment number one is to include the following legislations, 0201-23, 0196-23, 0159-23, 0199-23, 0053-23, 0205-23. Amendment two to the, excuse me, to the agenda is to do a consent agenda for two legislations. Legislation 0201-23 and 0205-23. Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Ms. Cook. Colleagues, we'll go to the board for a vote on the main motion on our agenda. Two minutes. Vice Chair Slater? Honorable Yunito? The time did expire on the clock. Honorable Yunito, vote screen. Vice Chair Slater? With that, colleagues, we have a vote of 15 in favor, zero opposed, with Speaker not voting. Colleagues, we do have an adopted agenda. Number four, old business, none. Number five, new business. So we will have our consent agenda go first. We do have Legislation 0201-23 and Legislation 0205-23. Staff, could you help us read these two legislations, our consent agenda into the record?
Consent agenda for two legislations. Legislation 0201-23, inaction relating to the Navajiaetik Committee and Navajo Nation Council, amending CAP-08-23, the Navajo Nation Fiscal Recovery Fund Delegate Region Project Plan for Honorable Casey Allen Johnson's Delegate Region. Chapters include Cameron, Coal Mine Canyon, Bird Springs, Loop, Tilani Lake, to include additional projects for this delegate region. This legislation requires a two-thirds vote, and this legislation is sponsored by Casey Allen Johnson. This legislation has been read into the record by electronic voice recording per Navajo Nation Council Rules of Order Number Nine. Legislation 0205-23, inaction relating to the Navajiaetik Committee and Navajo Nation Council, amending CJY-51-23 and CAP-21-23, the Navajo Nation Fiscal Recovery Fund Delegate Region Project Plan for Honorable Herman M. Daniels' Delegate Region. Chapters include Tepakin, Navajo Mountain, Shanto, Oljeto, to include additional projects for this delegate region. This legislation requires a two-thirds vote. This legislation is sponsored by Honorable Herman M. Daniels Jr., co-sponsored by Honorable Kristillen Curly. This legislation has been read into the record by electronic voice recording per Navajo Nation Council Rules of Order Number Nine. Those are the two legislations listed under the consent agenda. Madam Speaker.
Thank you, staff. Colleagues, this reminder will require a two-thirds vote. So with our colleagues are, in the restrooms or within the conference room. Do we have a motion for consent agenda? Motion by Honorable Damon, second by Honorable Parrish. Colleagues, I am going to open the board for two minutes, and it will require a two-thirds vote, 16 votes. Consent agenda is not subject to debate, so we'll just do a... Point of order raised by Honorable Karati?
Oh, yeah, Shadiza, can you please cite in the code where a consent agenda is not subject to debate?
Thank you, Honorable Karati. We recognize that point of order. We're all looking in our rule books here. Just give us a few minutes. Colleagues, I'm gonna refer the time over to Ms. Barbaroff and to explain the consent agenda and if it is debatable.
Thank you, Navajo Nation Council. I'm looking at 2 NNC 163B. And 2 NNC 163B states that, "The agenda shall allow for inclusion of a consent schedule, which is a listing of resolutions which will likely be approved by unanimous consent of the delegate in attendance. The consent schedule shall be developed by the speaker. Upon request by any delegate, an item on the consent schedule shall be moved to the regular schedule on the agenda. The speaker shall move any item on the consent schedule which receives more than five minutes of debate or questioning to the regular schedule on the agenda." So... This is subject to really confusing reading, but the way I interpret it is that you have a consent schedule, you have as a total of council, you got five minutes to debate on the consent schedule. That's it, not individually, just five minutes in total. If you want to debate longer than that, you need to move those items to the regular agenda. Back to you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Honorable Karati. Colleagues, there, I don't see no other objections. I believe we do have our two-thirds, 16 members here, 17 members, including with me. Colleagues, we'll move to a vote, two minutes on the board. Two minutes on the board. It does require a two-thirds vote, meaning sixteen green votes, colleagues. Honorable Jesus, Honorable Simonsen, we do have five excused absences. Time has expired on the board. We have a vote of sixteen in favor, zero opposed with Speaker not voting. Next on our Agenda B, we have Legislation 0159-23. Primary sponsor, Honorable R. Viso. This is a two-thirds legislation, colleagues. I'll return the floor over to staff to read the title to the record.
Legislation 0159-23, an action relating to the N'ab'ia'tik Committee and the Navajo Nation Council, amending CMY-39-23 and CAP-11-23, the Navajo Nation Fiscal Recovery Fund Delegate Region Project Plan for Honorable Stephen R. Viso's delegate region. Chapters include Church Rock, Yumbato, Mariano Lake, Pinedale, Smith Lake, Tharoo, to include additional projects for this delegate region. This legislation requires a two-thirds vote and moves on to Navajo Nation OPVP for final authority. This legislation is sponsored by Honorable Stephen R. Viso, and this legislation has been read into the record by electronic voice recording per Navajo Nation Council Rules of Order Number Nine. Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Ms. Cook. Colleagues, do we have a motion on the floor? Motion by Honorable Crowdie, second by Honorable Azaret. Colleagues, there will be a request for an amendment on the floor. We have Honorable Crowdie.
Oh, hi, Chadeja. I'd like to offer the amendment that was included in this legislation. Staff, if you could read it into the record, and I'll reserve my time. Thank you.
Reserve time of 4:53. Staff, could you help us read Amendment Number One into the record, and I will call for a second.
Amendment to Legislation Number 0159-23. Delete Exhibit A summary sheet and insert new Exhibit A summary sheet attached herein. Add to DOJ Eligibility Review an Appendix A information for the following project. One, Smith Lake Chapter Assistance for Community Members in Need project to Exhibit A attach herein. Renumber or reletter succeeding paragraphs, sections, and exhibits as necessary and appropriate. The council and committee hereby authorize Office of Legislative Services and Office of Legislative Council to correct grammatical and/or other technical errors, including adjustment of comprehensive dollar amounts, consistent with the intent of this amendment. This amendment supersedes all inconsistent language in any other committee or council amendment. Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Ms. Cook. Colleagues, are there, is there a second? Second by Honorable Begay. Colleagues, are there any questions on Amendment Number One? Going twice. Honorable Tolth.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Speaker. Also, I believe 021 tracking number is ready. Can I add also to this amendment? Does it require a different amendment to this agenda? Thank you.
Your legislation that we were trying to add during adopting the agenda, I believe it is, you are correct that it is ready. However, you would have to do it during the main motion when we are on the agenda, so after this vote, after this legislation, so make sure to press your button, Chadeja. Are there any other questions or comments on Amendment Number One? Going twice, going three times, colleagues, we are going for a vote on Amendment Number
Less than forty seconds on the board, colleagues. Honorable Charles Newton, vote screen. Colleagues, we have the full vote here from the floor. We have sixteen in favor, zero opposed with Speaker not voting on Amendment Number One. Amendment Number One does carry. Colleagues, we are back on our main motion. Are there any comments or questions? Second call. Third call. Staff, could we do our second reading, and we will open up the board for a two-minute
Amendment Number One to Legislation Number 0159-23. Delete Exhibit A summary sheet and insert new Exhibit A summary sheet attached herein. Two, add the DOJ Eligibility Review an Appendix A information for the following project. One, Smith Lake Chapter Assistance for Community Members in Need project to Exhibit A attach herein. Renumber or reletter succeeding paragraphs, sections, and exhibits as necessary and appropriate. The council and committee hereby authorize Office of Legislative Services and Office of Legislative Council to correct grammatical and/or other technical errors, including adjustment of comprehensive dollar amounts, consistent with the intent of this amendment. This amendment supersedes all inconsistent language in any other committee or council amendment. Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Ms. Cook. Colleagues, I'll go and call for a vote. You have two minutes on the board. Twenty more seconds on the board, colleagues. Honorable Parrish. Honorable James. Thank you, colleagues. We have the full vote here within the council chambers. That's a vote of sixteen in favor, zero opposed with Speaker not voting. So the main motion carries. Colleagues, we are moving down to Legislation 0196-23, and we do have the co-sponsor here, Vice Chair Johnson. Staff, could you help us read that title to the record?
Legislation 0196-23, an action relating to the N'ab'ia'tik Committees and the Navajo Nation Council, amending Council Resolution CJY-41-21 and CJN-29-22, delegating the N'ab'ia'tik Committee as the final approval authority for delegate region project plans funded through the Navajo Nation Fiscal Recovery Funds. This legislation requires a two-thirds vote. This legislation is sponsored by Honorable Danny Simpson, co-sponsored by Honorable Casey Allen Johnson. This legislation has been read into the record by electronic voice recording per Navajo Nation Council Rules of Order Number Nine. Madam Speaker.
Thank you, staff. We do have a motion by Honorable Crowdie, who is second by Honorable James.
Are there any questions or comments before I turn the floor over to our presenter? If there's no questions or comments, we'll go straight into a vote. If you are, press your RTS button, second call. Third call. Colleagues, we'll go straight to a vote. Two minutes on the board. Honorable Nathan Nota. Honorable Damon votes green. Honorable Nota. Honorable Nota votes green. Colleagues, that's the full vote here within the council chamber. Now, the main motion, a vote of sixteen in favor, zero opposed with Speaker not voting. The main motion carries. Moving on down, we have Legislation 0199-23. Prime sponsor, Honorable Crowdie. Staff, could you help us read the legislation to the record?
Legislation 0199-23, an action relating to the N'ab'ia'tik Committee and the Navajo Nation Council, amending CJY-57-23 and CD-67-22, the Navajo Nation Fiscal Recovery Fund Delegate Region Project Plan for Honorable Amber Canaz Bacroti's delegate region. The chapters include Cove, Totalina, Two Gray Hills, Red Lake, T'wahltro, Sheep Springs, Sinasti, Baklabato, G'dai, Toko, to include additional projects for this delegate region. This legislation requires a two-thirds vote. This legislation is sponsored by Honorable Amber Canaz Bacroti. This legislation moves forward to Navajo Nation OPVP for final authority, and this legislation has been read into the record by electronic voice recording per Navajo Nation Council Rules of Order Number Nine. Madam Speaker.
Thank you. Staff, we do have a motion by Honorable James, second by Honorable Shandine Parrish. Colleagues, we'll turn the floor over to Honorable James.
I'd like to entertain an amendment that, I'd like to make that motion, Speaker. Thank you.
Thank you. There's a motion for Amendment Number One. Ms. Cook, could you help us read Amendment Number One into the record?
Amendment to Legislation 099-23. Sponsors Honorable Amber Canaz Bacroti for this legislation. On page one, line eighteen through line nineteen, delete from the word G'dai, Toko, through the end of this sentence as indicated below and insert as following. Strike through G'dai, Toko, to include additional projects for this delegate region. Insert new language G'dai, Toko, to remove projects and include additional projects for this delegate region. On page two, line eleven, delete, strike through herein by reference, and replace with, underline, attached as Exhibit One without project exhibits. On page four, line thirty, after signed into law by the President of the Navajo Nation on August 4, 2023, insert, underline, bold, Exhibit One. Insert new, bold, Exhibit One. On page five, line six through line seventeen, delete paragraphs G and H, and insert new paragraphs as indicated below and insert as following. Strike through paragraph G, all additional projects listed in the, in the All additional projects listed in the Honorable Amber Canaz Bakroti's Delegate Region Project Plans attached as Bowl Exhibit A have been deemed Fiscal Recovery Fund eligible by NNDOJ. In addition, Honorable Amber Canaz Bakroti's Delegate Region Project Plan does not exceed amount of $8,802,340 as set forth in CJN-29-22, Section 3F. Strike through paragraph H. The Navajo Nation Council hereby finds that it is in the best interest of the Navajo Nation and Honorable Amber Canaz Bakroti's Delegate Region Chapters and Communities to approve and adopt additional projects as part of the Navajo Nation Fiscal Recovery Fund Delegate Region Project Plan for Honorable Amber Canaz Bakroti's Delegate Region. Chapters Cove, Totalina, Two Gray Hills, Red Valley, T'wahlt'wah, Sheep Springs, Baklabato, Sinasti, G'dai, T'wah, as set forth in Exhibit A. Insert new Exhibit G, underline that Honorable Amber Canaz Bakroti has requested to amend CJY-57-23 to delete the Sinasti Chapter Water Diversion System Project under NNDOJ Review Number HK0555 and to delete the Baklabato Chapter Parking Lot Solar Lights Project under NNDOJ Review Number HK0590 and to delete the Baklabato Chapter Septic Cleaning Services Project under NNDOJ Review Number HK0593 from the Delegate Region Project Plans covering the Cove, Totalina, Two Gray Hills, Red Valley, T'wahlt'wah, Sheep Springs, Sinasti, Baklabato, G'dai, T'wah chapters. The removal of these projects will revert $434,609 back to Honorable Amber Canaz Bakroti's Delegate Region Projects Plan unallocated amount. Insert new H, underline. In addition to the removal of the Sinasti Chapter Water Diversion System Project and the Baklabato Chapter Parking Lot Solar Lights Project and the Baklabato Chapter Septic Cleaning Services Project, Honorable Amber Canaz Bakroti has requested that additional projects be added to the Delegate Region Project Plan covering the Cove, Totalina, Two Gray Hills, Red Lake, T'wahlt'wah, Sheep Springs, Sinasti, Baklabato, G'dai, T'wah, chapters originally approved by CD-67-22. The additional projects which have been deemed Fiscal Recovery Fund eligible by NNDOJ, as well as the deleted projects, are set forth in Exhibit Two. After the deletion and addition of projects, the Honorable Amber Canaz Bakroti's Delegate Region Projects Plan does not exceed the amount of $8,802,340 as set forth in CJN-29-22, Section 3F. Insert I, underline. The Navajo Nation Council hereby finds that it is in the best interest of the Navajo Nation and the Honorable Amber Canaz Bakroti's Delegate Region Chapters and Communities to approve and adopt the removal of three projects and add additional projects as part of the Navajo Nation Fiscal Recovery Fund Delegate Region Project Plan for Honorable Amber Canaz Bakroti's Delegate Region. Chapters Cove, Totalina, Two Gray Hills, Red Valley, T'wahlt'wah, Sheep Springs, Sinasti, Baklabato, G'dai, T'wah, as set forth in Exhibit Two. Delete Exhibit A summary sheet and insert new Exhibit Two summary sheet attached herein. On page five, line twenty-four through line twenty-five, delete from the word "G'dai, T'wah" through the end of the sentence as indicated below and insert as follows. Strike through "Bowl G'dai, T'wah" to include additional projects for this delegate region. Insert new language, underline "Bowl G'dai, T'wah" to remove projects and include additional projects for this delegate region. On page five, line twenty-six, insert a new paragraph as indicated below and insert as following. The Navajo Nation hereby approves the removal of three projects, the Sinasti Chapter Water Diversion System Project under NNDOJ Review Number HK0555 and the Baklabato Chapter Parking Lot Solar Lights Project under NNDOJ Review Number HK0590 and the Baklabato Chapter Septic Cleaning Services Project under NNDOJ Review Number HK0593 listed in CJY-57-23 for Honorable Amber Canaz Bakroti's Delegate Region Project Plan as stricken in Exhibit Two. The removal of these projects from Honorable Amber Canaz Bakroti's Delegate Projects Plan will revert $434,609 back to the Delegate Region's Project Plan's unallocated amount. Renumber or reletter succeeding paragraphs, sections, and exhibits as necessary and appropriate. The council and committee hereby authorize Office of Legislative Services and Office of Legislative Council to correct grammatical and other technical errors, including adjustment of comprehensive dollar amounts consistent with the intent of this amendment. This amendment supersedes all inconsistent language in any other committee or council amendment. Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Ms. Cook, for reading Amendment Number One into the record. We do have a motion by Honorable James, and we do have a second by Honorable Norman B. Gay. Colleagues, are there any questions to Amendment Number One? Second call, third call, going to the board to vote on Amendment Number One. One more minute on the board, colleagues. Honorable Arviso, Vice Chair Johnson, Honorable Seau, Honorable Eugene Charles Newton. Honorable Arviso, vote's green. Colleagues, we do have a vote of sixteen in favor, zero opposed, and Speaker not voting on Amendment Number One. Amendment Number One does carry. Colleagues, we are back on our main motion. Are there any other questions or comments? Second call. Third call. Staff, we have our second reading, and we will go straight to a vote.
Amendment Number One to Legislation 0199-23. On page one, line eighteen through line nineteen, delete from the word "G'dai, T'wah" through the end of the sentence as indicated below and insert as follows. Strike through "Bowl G'dai, T'wah" to include additional projects for this delegate region. Underline "Bowl G'dai, T'wah" to remove projects and include additional projects for this delegate region. On page two, line eleven, delete. Strike through herein by reference and replace with underline "Attached as Exhibit One without project exhibits." On page four, line thirty, after signed into law by the President of the Navajo Nation on August 4, 2023, insert "Bowl Exhibit One." Insert new "Bowl Exhibit One." On page five, line six through line seventeen, delete paragraphs G and H and insert new paragraphs as indicated below and insert as follows. Strike through G. All additional projects listed in the Honorable Amber Canaz Bakroti's Delegate Region Project Plans attached as Exhibit A have been deemed Fiscal Recovery Fund eligible by NNDOJ. In addition, Honorable Amber Canaz Bakroti's Delegate Region Projects Plan does not exceed the amount of $8,802,340 as set forth in CJN-29-22, Section 3F. H, delete. Paragraph H. The Navajo Nation Council hereby finds that it is in the best interest of the Navajo Nation and the Honorable Amber Canaz Bakroti's Delegate Region Chapters and Communities to approve and adopt additional projects as part of the Navajo Nation Fiscal Recovery Fund Delegate Region Project Plan for Honorable Amber Canaz Bakroti's Delegate Region. Chapters include Cove, Totalina, Two Gray Hills, Red Valley, T'wahlt'wah, Sheep Springs, Sinasti, Baklabato, G'dai, T'wah, as set forth in Exhibit A. Underline. New paragraph G. The Honorable Amber Canaz Bakroti has requested to amend CJY-59-23 to delete the Sinasti Chapter Water Diversion System Project under NNDOJ Review Number HK0555 and to delete the Baklabato Chapter Parking Lot Solar Lights Project under NNDOJ Review Number HK0590 and to delete the Baklabato Chapter Septic Cleaning Services Project under NNDOJ Review Number HK0593 from the Delegate Region Projects Plan covering the Cove, Totalina, Two Gray Hills, Red Valley, T'wahlt'wah, Sheep Springs, Sinasti, Baklabato, G'dai, T'wah, chapters. The removal of these projects will revert $434,609 back to Honorable Amber Canaz Bakroti's Delegate Region's Project Plan unallocated amount. Insert new paragraph H. In addition to the removal of the Sinasti Chapter Water Diversion System Project and the Baklabato Chapter Parking Lot Solar Lights Project and the Baklabato Chapter Septic Cleaning Services Project, Honorable Amber Canaz Bakroti has requested that additional projects be added to the Delegate Region Project Plans covering the Cove, Totalina, Two Gray Hills, Red Valley, T'wahlt'wah, Sheep Springs, Sinasti, Baklabato, G'dai, T'wah, chapters originally approved by CD-67-22. The additional projects which have been all deemed Fiscal Recovery Fund eligible by NNDOJ, as well as the deleted projects, are set forth in Bowl Exhibit Two. After the deletion and addition of projects, the Honorable Amber Canaz Bakroti's Delegate Region Project Plan does not exceed the amount of $8,802,340 as set forth in CJN-29-22, Section 3F. Insert new exhibit... Excuse me. Insert new paragraph I. The Navajo Nation Council hereby finds that it is in the best interest of the Navajo Nation and Honorable Amber Canaz Bakroti's Delegate Region Chapters and Communities to approve and adopt the removal of three projects and add additional projects as part of the Navajo Nation Fiscal Recovery Fund Delegate Region Project Plan for Honorable Amber Canaz Bakroti's Delegate Region. Chapters Cove, Totalina, Two Gray Hills, Red Lake, T'wahlt'wah, Sheep Springs, Sinasti, Baklabato, G'dai, T'wah, as set forth in Bowl Exhibit Two. Delete Exhibit A summary sheet and insert new Exhibit Two summary sheet attached herein. On page five, line twenty-four through line twenty-five, delete the word "G'dai, T'wah" through the end of the sentence as indicated below and insert as follows. Strike through "Bowl G'dai, T'wah" to include additional projects for this delegate region. Underline "Bowl G'dai, T'wah" to remove projects and include additional projects for this delegate region. On page five, line twenty-six, insert a new paragraph as indicated below and insert as follows. New paragraph A, underline. The Navajo Nation hereby approves the removal of three projects, the Sinasti Chapter Water Diversion System Project under NNDOJ Review Number HK0555 and the Baklabato Chapter Parking Lot Solar Lights Project under NNDOJ Review Number HK0590 and the Baklabato Chapter Septic Cleaning Services Project under NNDOJ Review Number HK0593 listed in CJY-57-23 for Honorable Amber Canaz Bakroti's Delegate Region Projects Plan as stricken in Exhibit Two. The removal of these projects from Honorable Amber Canaz Bakroti's Delegate Region Projects Plan will revert $434,609 back to her Delegate Region Projects Plan's unallocated amount. Renumber or reletter succeeding paragraphs, sections, and exhibits as necessary and appropriate. The council and committee hereby authorize Office of Legislative Services and Office of Legislative Council to correct grammatical and other technical errors, including adjustment of comprehensive dollar amounts, consistent with the intent of this amendment. This amendment supersedes all inconsistent language in any other council or committee or council amendment. Madam Speaker, that is the Amendment One for Legislation 0199-23.
Thank you, Ms. Cook. That was a long second reading, colleagues. We are back to voting on the main motion, colleagues. The voting board is open for two minutes. It will require a two-thirds vote, colleagues. Honorable Seau. Honorable Tolth. Honorable Damon. Colleagues, we have a full vote from the floor. We have a vote of sixteen in favor, zero opposed, with Speaker not voting. So the main motion passes. All right. Thank you. Colleagues, we're moving down with our agenda. We are on Legislation 0207-23. We have sponsor Honorable Parrish. Staff, could you help us read the title into the record? Honorable Tolth?
My legislation tracking number 213. Ilakha ad shli, Speaker.
Honorable Tolth, you can... Honorable Tolth, you can... Since we did just do a vote, we are back on the main motion, so you can entertain any motion. Kodo shche.
Okay, request to amend the agenda. Amendment to add Legislation 213 on this general regards to three million undesignated funds to be given to the 110 chapter for emergency. Thank you. Have the staff read the legislation. Thank you.
Asha Che, just a recommendation, this would be a motion to suspend the floor rules to add on an emergency legislation. Honorable Tolth?
Okay, suspend the floor rules and then go with this Legislation 213.
We're getting that correct here on the board, colleagues. It reads, motion to suspend floor rules, add emergency legislation 0213-23. Staff, could you help us read the title into the record before we entertain a second?
Legislation 0213-23. An action relating to an emergency and Navajo Nation Council approving three million from the unreserved undesignated fund balance, UUFB for 110 chapters emergency fund accounts, waiving 12 NNC, Section 820E, and Section 820F. This legislation... Um, this legislation is sponsored by Honorable Georgia H. Toth. Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Ms. Cook. Uh, regards to, uh, do we have a second? We have a second by Honorable Parish. Uh, colleagues, regarding to going back to our rules, Rule Twenty Four, suspension of floor rules. B, the motion to suspend floor rules shall not carry unless passed by a two-thirds vote of the full membership of the council. And so will require a sixteenths vote to be added on to our agenda, colleagues. Are there any questions or comments on the motion that is on the floor right now, colleagues? Second call. Third call. Colleagues, go to a vote on the motion to suspend floor rules to add on emergency legislation. And if it does carry with a sixteenth vote, it will be the next legislation on the agenda, colleagues. Uh, two minutes on the board. One more minute on the board, colleagues. Thirty more seconds. Ten more seconds, colleagues. Honorable Erviso. All right, colleagues, the votes have locked. Uh, Vice Chair Johnson. How do you vote? Vote green. We have fourteen in favor with two opposed, with Speaker not voting. So the motion to suspend floor rules to add on an emergency legislation does fail. Uh, colleagues, we will continue with our agenda. We do have Legislation Zero Two Zero Seven Dash Two Three. Primary sponsor by Honorable Parish. Uh, staff, could you help us read the legislation to the record?
Legislate, Legislation Zero Two Zero Seven Dash Two Three. An action relating to budget and finance and the committee and Navajo Nation Council accepting the audit report provided by K P M G L L P regarding the Navajo Nation's fiscal financial statements for fiscal year 2022. This legislation is sponsored by Honorable Shandine Parish. This legislation has been read into the record by electronic voice recording per Navajo Nation Council Rules of Order Number Nine. Madam Speaker.
Colleagues, do we have a motion on the floor? Motion? Motion by Honorable Daniels. Do we second by Chair Eugenia Charles Newton? Ha'de shah. Okay, second by Chair Eugenia Charles Newton. Uh, colleagues, will we be having any questions on the floor? If so, raise your hand or press your roll call or request to speak. Second call. Third call. I don't see any colleagues. We go to the board for a vote. Uh, two minutes on the board. Honorable Charles Newton votes green. It will require majority vote. Uh, Vice Chair Johnson votes green. Honorable Yunito votes green. One more minute on the board, colleagues. Honorable Toth. Honorable So. Honorable Vice Chair Johnson did vote green. Honorable So votes green. Honorable Toth. Honorable Toth. Twenty seconds, or less than twenty seconds on the board. We have the full vote on the floor, colleagues. We have a vote of sixteen in favor, zero opposed, with Speaker not voting. Main motion carries. Uh, colleagues, we have one more legislation on the agenda, colleagues. Legislation Zero Zero Five Three Dash Two Three. Primary sponsor Honorable Crowdy. Uh, staff, could you help us read the legislation to the record?
Legislation Zero Zero Five Three Dash Two Three. An action relating to law and order and the committees and Navajo Nation Council. Apologies. Legislation Zero Zero Five Three Dash Two Three. An action relating to law and order and the committees and Navajo Nation Council enacting the Navajo Nation Victims Right Act of 2023, amending Title Seventeen of the Navajo Nation Code. Sponsored by Honorable Amber Canaz Bakrati, co-sponsored by Honorable Eugenia Charles Newton. This legislation, Navajo Nation is final authority. This legislation has been read into the record by electronic voice recording per Navajo Nation Council Rules of Order Number Nine. Madam Speaker.
Thank you, staff. We have a motion by Honorable James. Uh, second by Honorable Parish. Uh, colleagues, there will be an amendment on the floor. Honorable James.
Uh, here at Speaker, I'd like to make a motion for an amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, Honorable James. There is a motion on the floor for amendment number one. And we will have staff read amendment number one into the record and then we will call a second.
Amendment number, amendment number one to Legislation Zero Zero Five Three Dash Two Three. Starting on page three, line fifteen through page six, line thirty, delete all text and replace with the following. Bow. Title Seventeen Law and Order, Chapter One, Enforcement of Criminal Code. Section Two Oh Nine, General Definitions. C C, underline, support advocate means a person who is employed or volunteers to provide information, referrals, resources, and direct support to the victim. This can include community-based advocates or systems-based advocates. This individual is not a legal advocate. D D, victim, means a person directly or proximally harmed as a result of the commission of a crime. In the case of the victim who is a minor, incompetent, incapacitated, or deceased, the legal guardians of this victim or the representatives of the victim's estate, family members, and or, and/or other persons appointed as suitable by the court may assume the victim's rights under this title, but in no event shall the defendant be named as such guardian or representative. Chapter Two, General Provisions. Underline, Subchapter Four, Victims' Rights. Strike through Section Five Thirty Six. Underline, Bow. Section Two Thirty, Victims' Rights. A, underline, a victim of, underline, a crime has the following rights and must be provided notice of their rights to the following. Strike through, family violence has a right to. One, underline, to be, underline, treat it with fairness, respect, and dignity within the criminal justice system. Strike through A, insert to, underline, strike through he or she has the right to. Underline, to, have the criminal justice system respond in a prompt and effi- effective manner. Strike through he or she has the right to. Delete through one, underline, three, two. Delete, excuse me, strike through B, capital B, underline, lowercase b. Reasonable, protect it from the accused. Strike through individual. Underline, which may include a separate waiting area or other safeguards to minimize the victim's contact with defendant, defendant's relative, and defense witness through, during court proceedings. Strike through two, underline, four, to be. Strike through, participate in the criminal justice system by being present and heard. Underline, at all court hearings, including proceedings involving release, plea, sentencing, or any parole proceedings. Strike through three. Underline, five, to be, strike through, capital B, accompanied by a, underline, support. Capital A, underline, strike through, lowercase a, advocate of their, underline, strike through his or her choice. Underline, as defined under Section Two Oh Nine, or an individual or family member who provides moral support to the victim. Six, to confer with the prosecution after the crime against the victim, victims has been charged before the trial or before any disposition of the case and to be informed of the disposition. Strike through four. Underline, seven, underline, to be, strike through, capital B, provide information about the sentencing and imprisonment of the, strike through, accused individual, defendant, underline, and to re, pre-sentence reports at the office of the prosecutor. Underline, eight, to provide a victim impact statement to the court, which the court is required to consider in making sentencing determination and restoring ca- Strike through five, underline, nine, to be, strike through, capital B, notified of the, strike through offenders. Underline, defendant's release from custody. Underline, no less than twenty-four hours prior to, strike through, his or her such release. Ten, underline, to, be. Strike through, capital B, notified of the defendant's known escape within twenty-four hours after the escape. Underline, eleven, to be timely notified of court proceedings. Strike through six, underline, twelve, to be, strike through, capital B, strike through, timely notified. Strike through of his or her rights, underline, of their rights under this section within less than forty-eight hours of the crime being reported and be provided with information, underline, relating to how the case will move forward, services and resources that are available. Strike through victim at the time the crime occurs. Strike through seven, underline, thirteen, to receive prompt restitution from the person or persons convicted of the criminal conduct that caused the victim's loss or injury and have restitution orders enforced. Strike through restitution and enforcement orders. Strike through eight, underline, fourteen, to be, free of intimidation, harassment, abuse, and uninitiated contact. Underline, from the accused or individuals in close relation to the accused. Strike through and, strike through nine, fifteen, to be, underline, to request and utilize the services of interpreter or translator if needed and. Underline, sixteen, to the presumption of the imposition, imposition of pre-trial release conditions in favor of protecting a victim, including but not limited to a stay-away order pursuant to Rule Fifteen of the Navajo Rule of Criminal Procedure. Underline, seventeen, to have the court fees for a protection order waived in cases where a crime has been charged involving the victim. B, underline, a victim's exercise of any right granted by this section shall not be grounds for dismissing any criminal proceedings, setting aside any conviction or sentence, or dismissing or denying a victim's filing of a petition for domestic violence abuse protection. Underline, C, victim has the meaning set forth in Section Two Oh Nine of this code. Strike through B, underline, D, victim's advocate privilege. Strike through confidentiality for victims. One, underline, in any proceedings under this code, a victim of domestic, strike through, abuse, underline, violence or sexual assault may refuse to disclose and may, strike through, request any volunteer or employee of a program for victims of domestic abuse to refrain. Underline, prevent a support advocate from disclosing, strike through, the content of oral communication and written records and reports concerning the victim. Confidential communication between the victim and, underline, support advocate. Capital A, strike through. A, including but not limited to written records and reports concerning the victim. Two, strike through this. Underline, the victim advocate privilege may be waived. Strike through only by the victim. It must be in writing. Underline, through a writing signed by the victim and must identify what information may be disclosed to whom and for what purpose. Such a waiver is not valid after thirty days or after the victim revokes the waiver. Three, strike through this. Underline, the victim advocate privilege does not relieve a person, underline, or advocate from, strike through, a duty imposed under applicable law. Underline, mandatory duty to report child abuse or neglect or from providing evidence about child abuse or neglect in court pursuant to proceedings under Title Nine, Chapter Eleven of the Navajo Nation Code. Four, strike through the provisions on confidentiality for victims. Underline, the victim advocate privilege shall not prevent the disclosure of information compiled about incidents of domestic and family violence, which protects the identity of the victim and family or household members of the victim. E, underline, the office of the prosecutor, the Department of Corrections, and the Police Department shall implement protocols and policies to implement the requirements of this section, including but not limited to the notice requirements. F, underline, the enumeration in this section of certain rights for victims shall not be construed to deny or disparage other rights granted by the Navajo Nation or return by vic, or retain by victims. Section Four Three Three, Definitions. Q, without consent means, one, underline, the victim does not express through words or action consent to engage in a sexual act or sexual contact, or the victim withdraws consent before or during a sexual act or sexual contact that the victim previously consented to. Two, underline, the victim clearly refuses to consent to engage in a sexual act or sexual contact- Two, underline, the victim clearly refuses to engage in a sexual act or sexual contact, and a reasonable person would have understood the victim's words or actions as a refusal of consent to the sexual act or sexual conduct. Strike through one, insert three, underline, the victim is coerced by the immediate use or threatened use of force against a person or property or. Strike through two, underline, four, the victim is incompetent to consent by reason of mental disorder, drugs, alcohol, sleep, or any other similar impairment of cognition, unless at the time the defendant engaged in the conduct constituting the offense the defendant did not know or could not reasonably have known of the facts or conditions responsible for such incompetency to consent. Or, strike through three, underline, five, the victim is intentionally deceived as to the nature of the act. For, strike through, underline, six, the victim is intentionally deceived to erroneously believe that the person is the victim's spouse or. Strike through five, underline, seven, the victim is a minor, and, underline, thus not old enough to give valid consent. Renumber or reletter succeeding paragraphs, sections, and exhibits as necessary and appropriate. The Office of Legislative Services and the Office of Legislative Council are authorized to make technical edits to this legislation and its exhibits to implement the committee's intent. This amendment supersedes inconsistent language in any other amendments, which language shall be conformed to this amendment. Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Ms. Cook, for amendment, reading number, amendment number one into the record. Colleagues, we do have a motion by Honorable James. Do we have a second? Second by Honorable Chair Eugenia Charles Newton. Colleagues, do we have any questions or comments to amendment number one? Second call. Third call. Colleagues going to the board for amendment number one. We have two minutes on the board. Honorable Azeret. Honorable Tullt. Honorable Parrish. Twenty seconds on the board. Colleagues, we do have the full vote here from the floor. We do have sixteen in favor, zero opposed, with Speaker not voting on amendment number one. Colleagues, we are back on our main motion. Colleagues, are there any comments or question on the main motion? Second call. Third call. We will go for a second reading and then we will go for a vote. Ms. Cook, I know that was a long amendment number one, but she will do the second reading and we will go to the board.
Amendment number one to legislation number 0053-23. Starting on page five, line fifteen through page six, line thirty, delete all text and replace with the following. Bowe, Title seventeen, Law and Order, Chapter one, Enforcement of Criminal Code. Bowe, Section two oh nine, General Definitions. Insert new paragraph, CC, underline, support advocate means a person who is employed or volunteers to provide information, referrals, resources, and direct support to the victim. This can include community-based advocates or system-based advocates. This individual is not a legal advocate. Insert new paragraph, DD, underline, victim means a person directly or proximally harmed as a result of the commission of the crime. In the case of the victim who is a minor, incompetent, incapacitated, or deceased, the legal guardians of the victim or the representatives of the victim's estate, family members, or any other persons appointed as suitable by the court may assume the victim's rights under this title, but in no event shall the defendant be named as such guardian or representative. Bowe, Chapter two, General Provisions, underline, Subchapter four, Victims' Rights. Strike through section five thirty-six, underline, Bowe, Section two thirty, Victims' Rights. Underline A, a victim of, underline, a crime has the following rights and must be provided notice of their rights to the following. Strike through, family violence has a right to. Underline one, to be, treat it with fairness, respect, and dignity within the criminal justice system. Strike through A, underline, two. To have the criminal justice system respond in a prompt and effective manner. Strike through he or she has the right to. Strike through four, underline, three, two. Strike through, capital B, be reasonable, protect it from the accused, strike through individual, underline, which may include a separate waiting area or other safeguards to minimize the victim's contact with defendant, defendant's relatives, and defense witness during court proceedings. Strike through two, insert, excuse me, strike through two, underline, four, to be, strike through participate in a criminal justice system by being present and heard, underline, at all court hearings, including proceedings involving release, plea, sentencing, or any parole proceedings. Strike through three, underline, five, to be, strike through, capital B, accompanied by a, underline, support. Underline A, strike through. A, advocate of their, underline, strike through his or her choice. Underline, as defined under section two oh nine, or an individual or family member who provides moral support to the victim. Six, underline, to confer with the prosecution after the crime against the victims has been charged before the trial or before any disposition of the case and to be informed of the disposition. Strike through four, underline, seven, to be, strike through, capital B, provide information about the sentencing and imprisonment of the, strike through accused individual, defendant, underline, and to read pre-sentence reports at the office of the prosecutor. Eight, underline, to provide a victim impact statement to the court, which the court is required to consider in making sentencing determinations and restoring. Strike through five, underline, nine, to be, strike through, capital B, notified of the, strike through offenders. Underline defendants' release from custody, underline, no less than twenty-four hours prior to, strike through his or her such release. Ten, underline, to be, strike through, capital B, notified of a defendant's known escape within twenty-four hours after the escape. Underline eleven, to be timely notify of court proceedings. Strike through six, underline, to be, strike through, capital B, strike through timely notify, strike through of his or her rights, underline, of their rights under this section within less than forty-eight hours of the crime being reported, and be provided with the information, underline, relating to how the case will move forward, services and resources that are available. Strike through victim at the time when the crime occurs. Strike through seven, underline, thirteen, to receive prompt restitution from the person or persons convicted of the criminal code that caused the victim's loss or injury, and have restitution orders enforced. Strike through restitution and enforcement orders. Strike through eight, underline, fourteen, to be, free of intimidation, harassment, abuse, and uninitiated contact, underline, from the accused or individuals in close relation to the accused. Strike through and. Strike through nine, underline, fifteen, to request and utilize the services of an interpreter or translator if needed, underline, and. Underline sixteen, to the presumption of the imposition of pre-trial release conditions in favor of protecting a victim, including but not limited to a stay-away order pursuant to Rule fifteen of the Navajo Rule of Criminal Procedures. Underline seventeen, to have the court fees for a protection order waived in case where a crime has been charged involving the victim. B, underline, a victim's exercise of any right granted by this section shall not be grounds for dismissing any criminal proceedings, setting aside any conviction or sentence, or dismissing or denying a victim's filing of a petition for domestic violence abuse protection. C, underline, victim has the meaning set forth in section two oh nine of this code. D, underline, victim advocates' privilege, strike through confidentiality for victims. One, underline, in any proceedings under this code, a victim of domestic, strike through abuse, underline, violence or sexual assault, may refuse to disclose and may, strike through, request any volunteer or employee of a program for victims of domestic abuse to refrain. Underline, prevent a support advocate from disclosing, strike through, the content of oral communication and written reports and records and reports concerning the victim. Confidential communication between the victim and, underline, support advocate. Including, underline, but not limited to written records or reports concerning the victim. Two, strike through this, underline, the victim advocate privilege may be waived, strike through only by the victim. It must be in writing, underline, through a writing signed by the victim and must identify what information may be disclosed, to whom and for what purpose. Such a waiver is not valid after thirty days or after the victim revokes the waiver. Three, strike through this, underline, the victim advocate privilege does not relieve a person or, underline, or advocate from a, strike through duty imposed under applicable law. Underline mandatory duty to report child abuse or neglect or from providing evidence about child abuse or neglect in court pursuant to proceedings under Title nine, Chapter eleven of the Navajo Nation Code. Four, strike through the provisions on confidentiality for victims. Underline, the victim advocate privilege shall not prevent the disclosure of information compiled about incidents of domestic and family violence, which protects the identity of the victim and family or household members of the victim. E, underline, the Office of the Prosecutor, the Department of Corrections, and the Police Department shall implement protocols and policies to implement the requirements of this section, including but not limited to the notice requirements. F, underline, the enumeration of this section or of certain rights for victims shall not be construed to deny or disparage other rights granted by the Navajo Nation or retained by the victim. Section four four, four three three, Definitions. Q, without consent means, one, underline, the victim does not express through words or action consent to engage in a sexual act or sexual contact, or the victim withdraws consent before or during a sexual act or sexual contact that the victim previously consented to. Two, the victim clearly refuses to engage in a sexual act or sexual contact, and a reasonable person would have understood the victim's words or actions as a refusal of consent to the sexual act or sexual conduct. Strike through one, underline, three, the victim is coerced by the immediate use or threatened use of force against a person or property or. Strike through two, underline, four, the victim is incompetent to consent by reason of mental disorder, drugs, alcohol, sleep, or any other similar impairment of cognition, unless at the time the defendant engaged in a conduct constituting the offense the defendant did not know or could not reasonably have known of the facts or conditions responsible for such incompetency to consent or. Strike through three, underline, five, the victim is intentionally deceived as to the nature of the act. Strike through four, underline, six, the victim is intentionally deceived to erroneously believe that the person is the victim's spouse or. Strike through five, underline, seven, the victim is a minor, and, underline, and thus not old enough to give valid consent. Renumber or reletter paragraphs, sections, and exhibits as necessary and appropriate. The Office of Legislative Services and the Office of Legislative Council are authorized to make technical edits to this legislation and its exhibits to implement the committee's intent. This amendment supersedes inconsistent language in any other amendment, which language shall be conformed to this amendment. Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Ms. Cook, for that second reading. Colleagues, we will go straight to a vote. We have two minutes on the board. And this is on the main motion, and it is a simple majority vote. A minute and ten seconds on the board, colleagues. Honorable Arviso, Honorable Azeret. Honorable Karoti. Honorable Karoti, vote screen. Vice Chair Slater. Honorable So. Thank you, staff. We do have the whole vote here from the floor. We have sixteen in favor, zero opposed, with Speaker not voting. The main motion passes. Thank you, colleagues. We are at the end of our agenda. Number six, close of session. Any announcement, colleagues? Just a short announcement. Tomorrow, we will be within the Navajo Nation Central Agency Parade. So if you would like to join, we will be meeting by the flea market area on the north side of Wells Fargo between six to seven a.m. So make your way that way and please join us. And also on Sunday, the Navajo Hopi Honor Riders will be coming to the park. Will be riding into the park around two o'clock p.m. on Sunday. So feel free to join us there as well, colleagues. Honorable Parrish for announcements.
Thank you, Speaker Curly, and thank you to my colleagues on the twenty-fifth Navajo Nation Council. I just want to make a quick announcement about the comprehensive budget schedule. So far, colleagues, we are on schedule to have a budget and finance meeting next Thursday. And after speaking to Speaker Curly, I believe we'll continue to develop the N'aukia Kit and Special Counsel Session for the consideration of the FY two thousand twenty-four comprehensive budget. I just want to commend my colleagues on the Budget and Finance Committee for their hard work these past few weeks, and also all of the committees for their due diligence in the development of the budget. That's the only announcement I have. Thank you, Speaker.
Thank you, Honorable Parrish. As we are looking at our calendar, colleagues, it looks like we will be having the N'aukia Kit Committee meeting next Friday. Committee meeting next Friday, and also starting our budget going into session that following Tuesday, following Labor Day. So that is tentative, and we will send out those meeting dates.
Not Labor Day?
No, not Labor Day. So be, starting on Tuesday. The week of the fair, Monday. We will be starting the next day after Labor Day, on Tuesday, colleagues, just for your calendars. We'll go down to Honorable Tulph, announcements.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Saturday tomorrow, Eastern Agency Quarterly Meeting at White Rock. So, New Mexico Delegate, Arashin, Danhini, Lilo, thank you.
There is a Eastern Navajo Agency Council Meeting tomorrow as well at White Rock Chapter, and we will have our staff assistant, Solotza, there if you do need some administrative assistant there at the meeting. Colleagues, also a message from our Chair, Brenda Jesus. There is a RDC work session for two days, on Monday and Tuesday, at the museum regarding the land user consent, so it is advised that all the whole council is invited to that work session. All right, colleagues, are there any other announcements? And Delegate Crowdy, I believe he did wanted a photo. If you are available after we adjourn, feel free to come up to the front to take a photo for her legislation that was just passed. Colleagues, I don't see any other announcements. Is there a motion to adjourn? Motion by Honorable Eugenia Charles Newton, second by Vice Chair Slater. Any objections? Go for a vote for adjournment. Honorable James. Colleagues, we do have the full vote from the council. We have a vote of fifteen in favor and one opposed to adjourn. So the motion to adjourn carries. We will adjourn at three thirty-eight p.m. Colleagues, travel home safely. Ado, kodo, hajot, da, dah, holiado, have a great and safe weekend.